Deputy City Manager. My partner Joe is handing out a packet. This is our annual insurance review and risk management review for the City Council. With me is also Justin Wilkinson from PMA. He's our claims administrator and our loss control company for the City of Asbury Park through the New Jersey Intergovernmental Insurance Fund. I'm going to briefly go through the packet. If there's any questions, please stop me. If there's any questions after the meeting, you have any questions at all tomorrow after you get a chance to review it, please feel free to give me a call. So if you open up your packet and you go on the right side of the packet and you pull the synopsis of coverages out, so that the first page, and again, I just want to thank the mayor and council for our reappointment this year in 2021. It's been a long time. The last time I was here to see governing body members was when I met with the mayor and delivered a thousand dollar safety award check. And that was in November. So I'm glad to be back and I'm glad to see everybody in person. The first page is basically just a synopsis of who we are and what we do. We've been your appointed risk manager since January 1 of 2016. These are our responsibilities, highlighted in the different paragraphs as your city representative. We do many functions. We work with your department heads. We review certificates of insurance. We review indemnification, contractual relationships, working with Fred and Eric Neimeth, the attorney from the NGIF, with Donna and Michael, Chief Ketti. So, and recently, we met Garrett now, so we're working with Garrett. We'll be here Monday for a safety committee meeting. Page two just continues with some of the things we do and just an incomplete list of some of the public entities that we handle as your risk manager. We actually, as an agency, we have eight offices and we insure 34 public entities. So, public entities is really what we do and what I do. Page three and page four, basically the resumes of the principals of our firm, starting with myself, my partner Joe who's here, and my partner Matt is on page four. Page five is what they call the indemnity and trust agreement that the New Jersey Intergovernmental Insurance Fund puts out. These are the individual claims deductibles by lines of coverage that since we've been your risk manager, we have negotiated and worked with the administrative people, the administrative team, and Eric Neimeth, the attorney. So you can see the reductions over the years, and this is our second renewal, that I've been your risk manager with the NGIF, the New Jersey Intergovernmental Insurance Fund. So, these are some of the terms beginning from January of 2020. And if you turn the page to page six, I put in the second paragraph, and I've shared this with Donna and with Michael, due to the success and the safety initiative that we've put on here in the City of Asbury Park, by reducing deductibles, I've underlined it there, we've saved the city now, to date through April, $223,062. That's actual savings to the city. By reducing deductibles on claims, that's less money out of your budget and out of your pocket. So that's been the past four years. The upside potential is up to $874,000, and that's because claims take time to mature. So as they mature, if they reach those thresholds that we've negotiated on the city's behalf, the savings are even more. So those are real dollar savings. Eric is not here, but I do want to thank him. He is the NGIF attorney. I know he works with Fred a lot and does a great job for the city and all the members of the NGIF. If you go to page seven, that begins what they call the Plan of Risk Management that's filed with the Department of Banking and Insurance each year. Page eight is basically just telling you that the NGIF commenced operations in 1991, and the City of Asbury Park's been a member of the Intergovernmental Insurance Fund since February of 2011. So it's been 10 years. On page nine, basically pages nine, 10, and 11 are the operational philosophy and procedures of the New Jersey Intergovernmental Insurance Fund. If you skip to page 12, claims are handled, loss control, so that's inspections of public properties, recommendations for safety are all handled through PMA, which Justin is from. Justin takes care of the claims administration along with Jennifer Seines. The safety and loss prevention, again, is PMA, and then the litigation management and legal team is Eric Neimeth with the Polaris Galaxy, which are the administrative arms of the NGIF. Pages 13 to 19 are the highlights and limits of the coverages. So I'm not going to go through all the individual ones, but essentially, on page 13, the NGIF and we represent you covering your auto liability, your public officials liability, your general liability, your environmental liability, your cyber liability, employment practices liability, workers' compensation. These are the coverages as outlined in the Plan of Risk Management that's filed with the Department of Banking and Insurance. So that's pages 13 to 19. If you go to page 20, these are additional coverages that we, as your risk manager, write outside the JIF. We write you an accident policy for your recreation program, and we work with Lisha. Where's Lisha? Hi, Lisha. I didn't say hello to Lisha. I'm sorry, Lisha. We work with Lisha on that. Last year, during these extraordinary times with the pandemic, we were able to contact Lisha, and actually, since a lot of programs were eliminated during the pandemic, we were able to reduce and eliminate those coverages under the policy and return $1,296 back to the city under that policy. We also carry an underground storage tank policy, which is site-specific. You see the three locations there, basically the Public Works Yard and the Wastewater Treatment Plant, and we do your group dental as well with Delta Dental. If you turn to page 21, this is basically what I call a work in progress. So this, if you work to the left side of the packet, besides our public entities brochure, I like to give you a snapshot of claims over the past three years. So the first one is the workers' comp claims for 2018, 2019, and 2020. You'll notice there was a spike in 2020 of the total claims, and that's because 26 of those claims were COVID-related claims. So really, when you carve them out, the reduction, the frequency of claims actually dropped from the prior year. So I just want to point that out. That's why you see a little hike, a little spike in claims there. That's worker compensation, work-related injuries. The next one is liability. This is your slip and fall bodily injury, falling trees on people's vehicles and cars. The city is protected under Title 59, so there's many protections available to the city. So people can't just sue and collect money. There's a lot of protections involved. But you can see here, again, the frequency of claims in 2020 reduced substantially from 2019. So the frequency of claims has a very positive trend. The severity is a little higher, but we had three large claims in 2020. So that's why the claims amount spiked, but the frequency came way down. And the frequency is very important. If we've reduced frequency, we've reduced the severity of claims. The next page is commercial auto. We, really, the city hardly has any first and third-party claims. This is going to be damage to other vehicles or damage to our vehicles, nothing significant, very low frequency and severity. So the city department heads do an excellent job in preventing claims. And the last one is property. And again, it's remarkable. There's only really one claim, and that was an electrical failure to a generator that we put a claim in last year. So you have really, essentially, no property claims. So again, the city is a very safe, safe city. This is why, for the last four years, five years that we've been your risk manager, you've gotten safety awards money. So we commend every department head. The other item on the left side of the package is something I put in there every year. I work with your department heads. It's what we require and what we recommend when the city contracts with vendors from the outside. I've reviewed the, we reviewed the electrical scooter contract recently. So we'll do that and we'll work with Fred and with Eric. If you go back to the right side to page 2021, I just want to point out, Donna was very instrumental in this. On the bottom of page 2021, she had recommended and we instituted a monthly Zoom meeting with your department, with actually Jen, myself, Donna, Michael. We review all the active worker comp claims. We have Mary Kay involved, and that helps tremendously because we've, it, what it does is it focuses in the claims, and even now we have the police chief on board with this. So now we have everybody coming in together where we can monitor active worker comp claims to make sure we get people back to work quickly. And I, Donna, for that, that was a great suggestion. On page 22, this is just a little bit about safety and training. This year, the end of last year and this year, PMA and Eric Neimeth and his attorneys put on a very comprehensive and extensive training program. So I listed the schedule of training that's been completed to date, and you can see we've got quite a few training items done. And then on the bottom is the pending training schedule. I've been working with Michael on that to get training done for your employees, for your boards, your volunteers. So, items are being scheduled, and we've completed, they've completed many training initiatives for 2021. And the last page is just, page 23, just some point of interest, and I've spoken to Donna about this, that I would mention some of these items. One of the things that they cleaned up in the NGIF, their executive committee, they passed a resolution this year which allowed us to actually reduce our fee to the city. So, the standard fee for risk managers is 6% of the assessment, basically the premium. We were at 6 and 1/4 because that's what they had on their books from 2015. I asked them to change that. They did that. So we reduced our fee, which saved the city $2,500, and we're glad to do that. The City of Asbury Park's assessment was very reasonably increased. I spoke to Donna about that. We're going through a very difficult insurance market right now, the last year, on all lines of coverage, including cyber, property, very difficult to get reinsurance. So that was a very modest increase for 2020. 2019, as I mentioned before, I brought a check and delivered it to Mayor Moore back in November for the 2019 safety incentive program. The executive board has not made a decision on 2020 yet. Again, I just, you know, mentioned that we sponsored the 2020 Mayor's Rodeo for Recreation. I know that didn't take place, but we're glad to give back to your community as a token of our appreciation for having us as your risk manager and do whatever we can do to help the members and the population. We also offered last year, and two out of the three of your departments took us up on it, we bought lunch for all your first responders. We offer it to your police, your fire, and your public works department, to offer them lunch, and we paid that, you know, just as a little thank you for being, working through extraordinary times. I want to congratulate your police department. You had police reaccreditation this year, and I'm working with Eric, and Eric's working with chief, with your police chief, to try to get you some grant monies from the New Jersey Intergovernmental Insurance Fund to reduce the cost of what reaccreditation.
That's been resolved.
It's been resolved, okay. So that's something I've been pushing with Eric. Congratulations being named top honor 2020, the mayor's healthiest towns in New Jersey. I actually read that, so I threw that little blurb in there. And again, I just want to thank Donna and Michael, Chief Ketti, and all your department heads for cooperating with us. Does anyone have any questions? I know I covered a lot. Feel free to give me a call.
Not a question, but a thank you. If we had multiple consultants or agencies for five years and save us $223,000, we could continue to reduce taxes. But because of that $223.
It's a nice number.
It was a reason we could keep the tax rate as low as possible. So we thank your company.
Thank you, Mayor. We're glad to contribute to that. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Donna.
Our next item up for presentation is we have NJ DOT grant applications by James Banano, our transportation manager.
Good evening, everyone. The New Jersey Department of Transportation recently released their fiscal year 2022 municipal aid grants solicitations. We will be applying for three of them. The municipal aid, which is useful for playing roads and other general transportation infrastructure, the bikeway grant, which is for developing bicycle infrastructure, and a safe routes to transit grant, which improves transportation on the way to transit and other locations in the area. For the municipal aid grant, we will be using it to improve.
Can everybody hear?
Should I speak up? I'm sorry.
Is your microphone on?
Sure. My apologies. We'll be using the municipal aid grant to redo 8th Avenue. Full reconstruction, we'll be updating it with ADA ramps and curb lines, replacing sanitary sewer and milling and paving the road and replacing striping. We'll be using the bikeways grant to create an Asbury Park Avenue bikeway that will travel from Main Street to Heck Street on the south side of the road. This will consist of two travel lanes, one in either direction, a parking lane on either side, and on the south side will be two bicycle lanes next to each other with a buffer between the other parking lane. We will not lose any parking, and it's will be, you know, improve traffic on the way to the beach for bicycles and keep you safely out of the way of traffic.
These are protected bicycles?
Protected bicycles, yes. There's a three-foot buffer between them and the parked vehicles. And finally, for our Safe Streets to Transit Grant, we'll be improving Bangs Avenue and Prospect Avenue. This, the next one, this has a, currently is a span signal. It's one signal hanging over it. We will improve it with a milling and pave, at the pavement in general, the intersection, improving the striping of the crosswalks, ADA ramp improvements, as well as a new signal with upgraded pedestrian signals and crossings. Those are our three grants that we'll be doing this year. Do you have any questions? Thank you.
Nothing. Thank you.
The only thing, I know I talked to Mr. Manzella the other day about it. I know he has some plans, but one of the intersections, and it has to be addressed as soon as possible, is Monroe, Prospect, and Church. I don't know if we're going to go to a four-way stop sign there, but maybe a blinking light, but that traffic light is horrific to, and that's being generous, and it is probably the worst one in the city.
Yeah, I had a few conversations today, actually, with Public Works and the Police Department Traffic Unit about what we can do there immediately, because it is, the signal's in bad shape, so we have to do something.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and members of council, before we move on to matters from City Council, with your permission, I have a small announcement.
No. Of course.
On behalf of the mayor and council, the entire City of Asbury Park, especially me, we'd like to offer congratulations to the Deputy City Clerk, Lisa Esposito, on the recent passing of the New Jersey Municipal Clerk's Act.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Congratulations, Lisa.
And as Donna said on our first attempt, and this is not an easy test to pass. And I really thought it was my birthday cake, but that's okay.
We will now move on to matters from City Council.
Hello, everyone. I just want to remind everyone that registration for the City of Asbury Park Summer 2021 Recreation Program is open. You can visit www.cityofasburypark.com/recreation for information on summer day camp, junior counselor program, youth soccer, summer activity bags, beach access cards, water park, and the ambassador work program, which was pretty awesome last year. So, please spread the word on this, and that's all I've got. Thank you.
Hi, just want to announce that this Friday in Springwood Park, the city will be distributing free meal kits to any resident who would like to come here. And it's Friday from 12 to 4:00. If it rains, it will be postponed to Monday.
Yes.
You're not on. Are you? Yeah, yeah, you are.
Friday, 12 to 4:00, free meal kits for everyone.
Thank you. Spread the word.
Asbury Park residents only.
Thank you. That's it.
I have nothing.
I have nothing.
Hey, matters from City Manager.
Oh, nothing, Melanie.
Matters from City Attorney.
And nothing at this time, Melanie. Thank you.
We will now move on to the public participation portion of the meeting. May I have a motion to open the public comment portion of the meeting with a three-minute time limit for each speaker?
Move to open.
All on paper?
Aye.
You just have to get up and go to the microphone.
Members of the public, please come to the mic, state your name and address for the record, and each speaker will be entitled to three minutes.
May I please take off my mask?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Nicholas Walker, and I represent a campus investors group.
Your address, please.
I beg your pardon?
Your address.
Oh, we're looking to open up a location at 1111.
No, no, your address.
I live in 249 Barbados Drive in Thomas River, New Jersey.
Thank you.
So we're looking to open up a location at 1111 Main Street. We're looking to open up a retail storefront, as well as dabble in either, you know, the art of making coffee with CBD, or making juices with CBD, or having a lounge within the premises that have CBD hookahs available. We intend to get involved with cannabis when it's legalized, and so we'd like to get the ball rolling as quickly as we can, so that we're prepared whenever legislation goes that way or it does not. The CBD lounge is fantastic. However, it'll be a piece of the retail storefront, unless zoning otherwise comes together with us on a solution. And with that said, this is our introduction to the town, and we're looking to, you know, work in lockstep with your administration to make sure that everything is fine copacetic and we don't make any type of waves that impact the town negatively. And with that said, we're looking to take a portion of our profits and donate it to causes within the community that, you know, that drive things like homelessness, you know, feeding the homeless, or donating, you know, equipment to schools, or funds for, you know, summer programs, things like that. And that's pretty much what I have.
Okay, well, thank you very much. And can you reach out to either this, and Donna, you tell me, either to Donna, the city manager, or Michelle in charge of planning? So, we're in lockstep, as you say, and just so you know, like, right now, we're in the process of opting out, but we'll probably opt back in. So we just want to make sure you're doing everything as per existing code and regulations.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right, thank you so much. I sent you on an email, and it has my contact information. Please feel free to give me a shout anytime.
Okay, thank you again.
My name is Ellen Michelson, 1501 Ocean Avenue in Asbury Park. On June 13, an exposé was published in the Star Ledger, revealing that FEMA wrote to Asbury Park officials back on March 1st that the proposed iStar Pool Club project may not meet the minimum FEMA standard for the type of flood zone it was proposed to be built in. The FEMA letter from Scott Duhl, Chief Flood Plane Management and Insurance Branch, in part states, and I quote, "Although we recognize the proposed project has already received approvals from New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, please note that aspects of several New Jersey permitting programs, including the Flood Hazard Area Control Act, CAFRA, the Coastal Area Facilities Review Act, and Waterfront Redevelopment Law, are not compliant with NFIP, the National Flood Insurance Program Standards. It is the local flood plane administrator's responsibility to ensure all development occurring within the SFHA is compliant with applicable NFIP standards regardless of any state-issued permits. NFIP participating communities that fail to adhere to NFIP standards may be subject to probation or suspension." The follow-up letter from Marian Lures of FEMA to various city officials then states, as quote, "As per our discussion, you indicated that, as the proposal was still at planning board review, the time was not yet ripe for the city to request construction documents. You indicated that, once the proposal is out of planning board review, it will go out onto the construction permit review. Once in construction review, it will also be subject to the city's flood plane development review process. Several regional staff, including an engineer, a planner, and our building science expert, reviewed the materials found on the city's website about the iStar proposal. From the documents available, it is not possible to unequivocally state that the proposal is compliant with the applicable NFIP construction standards. In fact, it looks like aspects of the proposal as currently depicted do not comply." Through over two-plus years of planning board meetings, the public continually raised concerns about the environmental impact of this project in what is designated a coastal high-hazard area. No one can deny the reality of climate change, rising sea levels, and more frequent severe hurricane seasons. Anyone who experienced Sandy here firsthand knows the damage a storm like that can do. I'm asking the City Council to please explain why this FEMA letter wasn't shared with the planning board and public ahead of the June 7 meeting. How could it be?
Okay, okay, your time's up. So sorry. Yep. Okay, thank you, and I'm sure you read our response.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, and I'll go through it briefly. You're right. On March 1, we got a letter. On March 8, we got a second letter from, follow-up from Ms. Lures from FEMA, a follow-up from Mr. Duhl's letter. Both letters, and then we had a conversation on the 15th. And both letters stressed in bold print, you have 45 days to respond. If you don't respond by April 15th, you could be held in two things, as you read. Probation, or probably withdrawn from FEMA altogether. The city responded, and then I remember quite well, the article, when I was called, it was a Friday afternoon at 4:30, and I was asked, the reporter, "Can you please wait a couple days? It's a Friday afternoon. I can't get in touch with the administration. Can you wait till Monday and do this?" "No, no, no. I'm on a strict timeline." So the article went out, and then Saturday, I called the reporter, Mr. Stronsky from the Star Ledger, and said, "Steve, your article doesn't make sense to me. What you're telling me in your article, and what I'm being told from local folks, some members of SAW, your two and two and my two and two do not equal four." And then, so Sunday, then I talked to a couple of members of SAW, and they were okay. And I put up on Nextdoor, since they had put up on Nextdoor, an explanation saying, yes, we did get these letters, and yes, the deadline was April 15th, and yes, that was and yes, that was 57 days ago from April, from that day, whatever, the 10th, whatever the day he did his article. So obviously FEMA is happy with our response." Every plan that the beach club submitted originally is a conceptual plan. Every plan has to be changed. Their original plans they submitted had a whole new front that has been changed, a whole new side, a whole new back. So everything they submitted has to be changed, and they have to comply to every FEMA law, every DEP law, or else it will not get passed by construction and will not be built. And that's it in a nutshell. I know a lot of people don't accept that, and if I drop the ball, the buck stops with me, and I apologize. But that's it in a nutshell. Thank you. Next, Mike.
Yes, hi, Michael Kirschner, 1100 Fifth Avenue. First of all, it's great seeing everybody, master mass, face-to-face. And I want to, I have three questions on three different things. The first is, you touched on it, James and Mike Manzella talked about some of the changes we're making to our streets. But John, you used the word horrific, and that really is a great way to describe our streets. I mean, we really have horrible streets in Asbury Park as far as the paving and everything else. And I understand there's budget issues and everything. But over the weekend, we had a family reunion, and Polly, you know, has a really large family, so we literally had to bus them in. And riding around on bikes with all these people from California, Virginia, Vermont, all over the country, everyone is like commenting, like, "Man, your roads are really, really bad. Bond, Comstock, even Fifth Avenue where we live, American Water came in, put new pipes in, they paved half the road." It's like, everything is like half. So my question is about, and I don't need all the details, but for seven years I've been living here, we've been talking about the roads in Asbury Park. Improvements haven't made, Sunset just paved fourth, but it's still so bad. So I just don't know what the decision-making process is, how do you allocate funds? Where's the priority there? That's one thing. The other two pertain to the beach. Seventh Avenue Beach, we love that beach, we love all the beaches here. And I understand from Mike Manzella that the playground was taken down, I think it was falling apart. I just don't know why that wasn't done with enough foresight where it would be up. Here we are, end of June, soon to be July 4th. We have one playground the entire beach. We have grandkids. Yeah, I like them being on there, because then I can just fall asleep and let them go on there and everything. But, I mean, one playground. Now, I guess I understand it's about, you know, decision-making. Why was that not planned accordingly where summer starts, we have a playground? And lastly, it's about the public restrooms. Beautiful restrooms, thank you, iStar. But the fact that they close at 6 o'clock, I just don't understand that. It's 8:30, 8 o'clock, people coming on. We live in a city where we know a lot of people go to the beach at 6 o'clock. Why? Because maybe they don't have the resources to pay. And the optics of that, I just don't know what the decision was, I'm sure you'll tell me when I'm done with my time. But especially of what we're going through with this pool club and the optics of that, there's no getting around the fact, when you close that at 6, restrooms and public facilities are for paying customers. And those who don't pay, there's no public restrooms. So I think that needs to be changed immediately. Dawn to dusk, keep those restrooms open till 8:30. People are on that beach, you know, not all night. I understand you don't want people sleeping on the beach, but we're out there, we're out there at 6, 6:30, 7 o'clock. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. The first one, as far as the streets being horrific, not going to fight you, but, and I don't have the numbers tonight, I'll have Mr. Manzel get them to you, if not tonight, within 24 hours. This council has paved more streets in the last four years than any council in the city's history. We were left, we still have funding that wasn't spent from years ago that we're doing. You mentioned Bond Street, it's being repaved this year. Tonight's agenda, we're adding Eighth Avenue. Memorial Drive is scheduled to be done this year. I could name, like, all the streets would be done. Fifth Avenue, because the gas company ripped it up because of an ordinance we passed, they cannot just pave half the street, they have to pave curb to curb. So all the streets being ripped up now by the water company, be it Drummond, Dunleavy, Central, Central Court, Prospect, you name it, they have to pave curb to curb, even if it wasn't paved within the last five years, which is normal for a normal town. If a street's been paved, like Sunset, had to be redone curb to curb, but every other street that they're ripping up, because the ordinance we adopted, has to be repaved curb to curb. So again, if Mike does have the numbers tonight, which I wouldn't expect him to.
We did put it out in our last newsletter that went out to the city. I think we're catching up on a lot of deferred maintenance over the years, when the city didn't have money to really fund infrastructure. But over the past four and a half or so years, we've paved 25% of all the streets. And that paving doesn't only include paving, it's also replacing the 100-year-old clay sewer pipe underneath the streets, upgrading all the ADA curb ramps, upgrading intersections, or, sorry, traffic signals that intersect those streets.
Right, and that's something like, I'm just going to make up, say the Memorial Drive project, which is the Asbury Park part, from Asbury Avenue to Sixth Avenue. Say that would be a normal town like Ocean Township, where they would just come in and mill and put down two inches, or four inches, a mill and pave job. It might be like $2 million, but because we're going down eight to 12 feet and replacing terracotta pipes that are leaking and costs more at the sewer plant, where we're just like treating infiltrated water instead of sewage, like, so we're saving the money on the back end of the sewer plant, where that expense has gone down dramatically because of all the repaving we've been doing. And every street we're repaving, the price is almost doubled because we're replacing 100-year-old sewer pipes. So thank you, Michael, for reminding me of that. Why the playground was not thought of to be replaced before, I don't have an answer for that. Yep, and bathroom hours, we're looking into changing that. But I'll let the City Manager go from there.
Yeah, so regarding the playground, we do have money allocated, we do have the playground specked out. Unfortunately, when the playground was put in initially, approvals were not obtained from the DEP. So now they're making us get approval. So we're waiting on Trenton, unfortunately, to give us approvals. The minute we get that approval, we're ready to have the playground installed. So we call them probably every other week to keep on top of them, and we've been doing this since April. So it was planned to be installed prior to Memorial Day. Unfortunately, we haven't gotten permission. Regarding the restrooms, I spoke to our beach manager today. The Fourth Avenue bathrooms have been staying open until 8:00. Other bathrooms have been closing around 6:00 o'clock. He's going to keep all the bathrooms open until 8:00 throughout the duration of the summer, unless it's a rainy day or something like that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. Polly Shilga, 1100 Fifth Avenue. Changing my mind about what I wanted to talk about. But first, I just want to, I want to thank Ellen for her very in-depth letter, which was, I read rather quickly, and I don't know if you all caught it all, but this conversation isn't over. As much as we respect that the council has worked really hard to try to figure out where, how this all occurred, or whether, you know, letters were sent, when they were sent, replies that were sent, I personally have a strong objection to the pool club as a member of SAW, and personally, as a resident, in the name of the environment and social equity. And that ties into, I don't want to belabor that, but it ties into the social justice issue of, and equity and accessibility in the city, of opening more streets, making streets more accessible to people, and marginalizing drivers, as it were. And I appreciate James's explanation of the grants, 326, 327, 328, 329. I'd like to know a little bit more about them, but this might not be the opportunity to tell me, to tell us more. As far as the bike way that's being created, there's a buffer, this is a question, but you can answer it later, the buffer, meaning it's a painted buffer but not protected, as I understand it. It looks like it's painted stripes. That's the question to that. So equity is enabling people to get around the city safely on foot. Many, many people live in the city and don't own cars, and they need to walk, or they ride bikes exclusively for transportation. So opening more streets, that's a question, would we be able to talk about opening more streets? Particularly, we did begin a little bit of discussion about Ocean Avenue as a space that could be utilized for pedestrianizing and make it safer and treating cars as guests. And then I do want to thank Mike and others who were instrumental in getting us a police on bikes, a bike patrol. There are four officers who participated in that program and became cops on bikes. And two of them came on my slow roll on Tuesday last week. So that was really great to meet them, they were super, very, very well-informed. It was a wonderful program. So I hope that we do, or maybe encouraging other police officers to become involved. And thank Chief Kelso or whoever else was involved in encouraging these officers to do that. It's really great. And again, community and equity. And, oh, the, I think the CBD bar is great on Main Street. But I also, I also want to bring up one last thing. The, there's a discussion of a brewery opening up on Cookman. We talked about at the Planning Board meeting. I think Rita made a good point that I would love this to be Asheville, the beer capital of New Jersey. But I think on Cookman, in that particular big space, I think there could be a better space for that. And I probably forgot something here. Want to hear my questions again?
No. No, but Michael, James, if you want to answer the question as far as the bike lanes.
The bikeway.
Yeah, so what's being proposed is what's in our bicycle pedestrians master plan, which is a protected, a parking-protected bike lane, which is a common means to protect a bike lane. But applying for the grant doesn't mean that the design is finalized, there could be additional physical barriers.
Can you show the design again?
Sure.
Just to make sure that I understood it clearly.
Sure.
Right, that one. So where it shows two people on bikes, and they look like they could be going in opposite directions.
Yes, so there could be additional protected, or physical barriers put in that buffer zone. That's up to the final design of that.
So actual bollards or barricades protecting, okay, and that would be a protected bikeway. And then I guess my only other question is...
You're out of time.
Oh, I did ask it, I mean, I asked, I'm just reminding you about, will we do more open streets?
Michael?
Everything's a conversation. I mean, I think we're willing to talk about it. I think we've had discussions about whether it could be possible or not, and I think it should be community-driven, so. I'll leave it at that.
All right, Asbury Park Complete Streets Coalition.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. Sylvia, Sylvia, Asbury Park Chamber of Commerce. Nice to see everybody again in 3D. A couple of days ago, I was introduced via email by Senator Gopal to one of the residents of Asbury Park who works with a nonprofit out of New York called Solace House. And Solace House is an organization that provides free resources to people who are in suicidal crisis, are self-harming, or others that have been impacted by suicide. And I think after these past 14, 15 months, the need for organizations like that is certainly sadly greater than ever before. The organization has what they call a Sunrise Walk annually in several cities throughout the country. This year, they're having their Sunrise Walk for the first time here in Asbury Park. And it's symbolic of walking in the dark into the light, which is why they call it the Sunrise Walk. It'll be this coming Sunday. Registration's going to be at the Wonder Bar at 4:30, that's AM. Initially, they had asked if there was any way that I could help do some kind of little reception afterwards at like 6:00 AM near the boardwalk, but there's really nothing open at that time. So I had anticipated myself doing some pop-up tents in the pitch dark and putting out bagels and coffee. But the Wonder Bar very graciously offered their venue for us to do that. So I will be there, they're inviting anybody who would like to join them. Registration is 4:30, the walk starts at 5:00, the light refreshments afterwards at 6:00. I'll be there, I won't be pretty. I think that it's a really magnificent organization, and we hope that they'll be able to do this annually here. And I think that's pretty much everything I have. Anybody who wants more information about Solace House, you can go onto their website, which is solacehouse.com. Hope to see some people there this coming Sunday.
Thank you very much. I wish you all the luck in the world, and the only thing I can say about 4:30 is it's better than 3:30. Thank you. Kathleen?
Hi, everyone. Kathleen Muma, 1104 Sunset Ave. It's nice to see everyone in person. Thanks to the City Council's support, and also the help of Michelle Alonso and the Green Team, Asbury Park is going to be an affiliate of Keep America Beautiful, which is a litter prevention and education program. And I'm really excited about it as a member of the Green Team. We have some training coming up that will hopefully help, you know, improve the well-being of our environment and our community. So thank you for that. Mayor, I just wanted to respond to your comment to Ellen's letter about the FEMA letter. The letter doesn't state that if you don't respond within 45 days that you'll be on probation or suspension. The letter states that if you allow a project to be built, you could, you could be, that doesn't comply with NFIP standards, you could be subject to probation or suspension. So I know that Donna responded to FEMA on April 14th, so it was within that 45 days, like you said. But I'm having trouble understanding the review process that is outlined in the response to FEMA. I can't understand why the application would go through over two years of hearings and get approved, and then have the construction department determine just before it's time to start building that the project doesn't comply with basic federal standards with respect to baseline flood elevation and foundation walls in a high-velocity flood zone. It's almost like building a house from the roof down. You know, everyone, applicant, iStar, the Planning Board, and the public objectors, like me, have spent a lot of time and money and effort on understanding and evaluating, hearing this application. So if the project doesn't comply, it seems any changes that are ordered to the project's design would constitute another Planning Board hearing, because they would be considered major modifications. So, you know, our Planning Board, no detail is too small for our Planning Board. They've listened dutifully and critically for two years about, you know, reviewing the fence design, et cetera. But the board was not notified that FEMA has concerns about the project's foundation walls, the elevation of the pool, and the Ocean Avenue wall extending to the ground, because again, it needs breakaway walls. I don't understand why the Planning Board wasn't notified of these concerns. And I would encourage them to, now that this information has come out, to allow them to reevaluate the application. I have two questions. I wondered if anyone from the city attempted to notify the Planning Board of FEMA communications? And second, if the construction office demands any reworking of the project, how will the public be advised of this?
Well, let me go back to something, and we can go back and forth on this all night, I apologize. There was two letters of March 1st. No, a letter of March 1st from Mr. Yeah, who, Dwell, who's basically not too much involved in this, but it seems Ms. Lures, who works for FEMA, is the person in charge of this, like, correspondence and everything. And her email of March 2nd, which I said, there is a follow-up, specifically, he does say that there's a 45-day timeframe, if not, A or B could be done, be it probation or that. So it isn't her, maybe you don't have a copy of that email, so I apologize if I didn't make that clear, if I misconstrued it. Did I tell anybody on the Planning Board about this? No. And again, if the buck stops with me, the buck stops with me. And...
But nobody from the city? No?
Well, all I can do is talk for myself, as far as, like, it went to myself, it went to the City Manager, it went to the Planner. If they talk to anybody on the Planning Board, but being a member of the Planning Board, I'm going to tell you, I never got any correspondence from planning about this. The only reason I knew is because I was the mayor.
And I believe that fully, that the Planning Board did not know about this information.
And since we talked on Saturday and Sunday, I called Barbara Krazak on Monday to ask her her knowledge about this. I called Barbara Krazak on Monday to ask her, her knowledge about this. And that's a question you're going to have to ask her about because I'm not going to answer for her. And so everybody knows Barbara Krazak is the planning chairperson who works with her planning department as much as I work with the city manager. Barbara works with the planner. So did I as mayor and I was CC'd on it, tell anybody? No. And if I dropped the ball, I take full responsibility.
And then my, my second question was if the construction department determines that changes need to be made to the project, how is the public going to be advised of this information? You know, the, the construction department's evaluation or, or process? Because it, you know, the consequence if they approve it and it's not compliant.
What? It's the floodplain manager that, that will review this, not the constructor. Whoops. So our floodplain manager will review this once we get the plans, which we have not gotten any plans to review. So the floodplain manager will make sure everything complies. And if it doesn't, it won't be approved. I mean, as simple as that.
And can we go on record saying we will make that public?
Oh, absolutely.
We will go on record right now saying as soon as we get anything, everything will be made public from here on out. Again, if I drop the ball, I apologize.
Thank you.
Thank you.
David Michelson, 1501 Ocean Avenue, Asbury Park. Oh, it's Doug. I apologize for any redundancies with some of the things other people have said. But I'm mostly here to comment on the process involved with the private pool club proposal. Over the last few years, couple of years, I attended the majority and many hours of planning board meetings. And, you know, I'm not, I, I was a CPA in another life. I'm not a, an architect. I know nothing about municipal engineering or environmental engineering. But I, I just found it hard to believe that something from FEMA would have been ignored by the planning board. I always had the impression that the planning board had the final say. I mean, I don't know how this stuff works. But the idea we had was that once they voted to approve, which they did provisionally a couple of weeks ago, that was it. I mean, but having all these other review committees involved now, after all these years, makes no sense. It's like the cart before the horse. Especially since, you know, this information's been available since early March. I, you know, it just doesn't make sense. The construction committee knows nothing about this structure. It's, it's construction. And, you know, I just don't understand. And I also, I, I don't mean to be offensive, but I found the press release made by the city last week was a bit disingenuous where it said, oh, we are not in jeopardy of losing our federal flood insurance, which according to the letters from FEMA I read, we are and we continue to be. And, you know, I think that's, you know, for the city, that's dangerous. Even just being exposed, you know, these letters existed, these federal laws exist. Why wasn't it complied with? Why did the planning board have no idea? They, in dozens and dozens of hours of testimony by the applicant, applicants, experts, architects, planners, environmental engineers. Don't you think they, they should have known that FEMA had its rules? I mean, the planning board should have known. They went through every kind of minutia you could possibly think of in dozen upon dozens of hours of our statements, our questions, of their, the applicant's experts. And this whole thing makes no sense. It, it really doesn't. And, and this process itself doesn't make sense. If the planning board was what we thought was the final arbiter, how come all these other reviews have to be made? I'm sorry, to me as a CPA, none of it made any sense. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I'm sorry you didn't like the city's explanation, press release, but it was factual again. Going back to like 10 days ago, when I said, we sent our reply 59 days ago and FEMA has not been in touch with us. And you would think if there was a problem, they'd be in touch with us. But I guess nobody can accept that. No, sir, you're done with your time. You can't speak, sir. You cannot speak, sir. You're done with your time. You cannot speak, sir. You cannot speak, sir. Sir, you cannot speak. Okay, so we'll, we'll go on. Thank you.
Carrie Butch, 500 Deal Lake Drive. It's wonderful to see everybody healthy and I'm glad we made it through. And I'm glad to see everybody here.
Thank you, Carrie.
John, I got to tell you that people do trust you and people like you. This particular statement that came out from the city eroded that trust. I want to read you the first sentence of that. And the first sentence is due to the prevalence of the incomplete and inaccurate information as reported in the media, it's important to inform the residents of Asbury Park about the correct facts regarding communications between the city and FEMA regarding the proposed beach club. I like it when you say we made a mistake and we're going to make it right. My parents taught me that when, it's not about problems. There's always going to be problems. It's how you solve them, how you address them. It doesn't play well in Asbury Park to do the fake news stuff. It doesn't play well nationally. It doesn't play well on the floor here. Don't give us that. Don't give us the fake news stuff. We found a letter that was critically important that should have been shared to the planning board. And if you made a mistake, you made a mistake. Own up to it. Do not give us the fake news stuff. And I, I got to be honest with you. I'm noticing there's an awful lot of times where the public was let in before, but it's not let in now. I'll give you one example. It was the budget. We used to have a budget committee. We no longer have a budget committee. The budget, when, when Rita and I found out that the budget was out, we were like, how is the budget out? We didn't see the budget out. It wasn't even printed in the coaster. All right, I want to tell you that I'm getting very, very, very upset at the fact that my friends and my residents of Asbury Park and citizens of Asbury Park are oppressing, they're oppressing documents and they're getting back letters written by attorneys. So my tax dollars and your tax dollars are paying for attorneys not to give us public information? I'm furious right now, John. I'm furious. I know you can see me shaking, but I want to pull it back. I want to rein it back. I want you guys to show us how transparent you are. I want to trust you. It's important we trust you on a local level because of what's going on on a national level. We have to trust you. We have to trust you because of things like COVID. I have 30 seconds. Okay, let's have an open public meetings. There's no reason why these can't be filmed. Let's have, get a budget committee back. Let's be much more transparent. I love every one of you. I love every one of you. But I want you, I, I think we're, that fake news stuff, it's got to go.
Okay, thank you. And Carrie, you can get in touch with me. I tell you to call me all the time. You don't, but you can call me. Don't text me. Please don't text me. I don't text. I'm sorry. I just can't figure it out. But as far as like your complaints about getting responses, Oprah requests and people are getting responses from lawyers. I mean, who do you want the response from? Nope, nope, nope. Get in touch with me and we'll follow up on that issue. Because if it's a legitimate issue and you have a good point, we'll, we'll correct it. Rita?
Hi, Rita Morano, 504 Eighth Avenue, Asbury Park. Well, I was just thinking about all this. There was very few people in this room that were here in 2002. It was me, Louise and you, John, that were here in 2002. We saw the document for the redevelopment plan. After it was signed that day, two minutes later, the city manager resigned. I think it should have been looked at even then, but it's not too late to look at it now. You're always amending the, the planning for the beachfront. You're always amending the boardwalk. The boardwalk never had liquor, never. It was a Bradley restriction, but you broke that and you put liquor. There's no reason why you can't open this up again about the pool. It's not a good idea to have it there. It should have been a public pool to begin with. That's what it was years ago, but we don't talk about that. Louise Murray got up to the microphone one day and said, there's an ordinance about cover up on the boardwalk and something on your feet so you don't get splinters. They almost, the whole town almost came down on, oh, that was 40 years ago. Well, so is the pool 40 years ago. There's no reason why you can't look at that again. No reason at all. It should have been a public pool to begin with, not a private pool. I think if I remember correctly, it was supposed to be either both of them at the same time or the public pool. We don't have a public pool. I don't think there would have been that much objection to it if it was a public pool. But you said one day, there's going to be a pool there. Well, now you can open it up again. How do you get a letter in March and don't answer till April is what I want to know. As important as all that, that should have been answered right away and it should have been brought to the planning board. How are they voting on things? They don't know half the things that are going on in the background. And you say that you can't tell the planning board what to do. Right? Planning board is autonomous. What's going on? I mean, like something has to be done about this. The other thing I wanted to talk about was Asbury Avenue. Did you, I rode down there today. What a horrible look. You've got to send people out there. They got cars on the sidewalk. They got big equipment in that lot. What are they doing there? That's the entrance of the city. It looks terrible. And the other thing I want to, I forgot what I wanted to say. On the back, I wrote down, well, that's it. There's no reason. We broke the Bradley restrictions. You know that. They're polite, the Bradley restrictions. Nobody knows about them in this area. They weren't here when they came up. So I want to know why you can't open this up again.
Rita, uh, let me start off with Asbury Avenue. I totally agree with you. You can ask the city manager. I drive her crazy about this with emails almost weekly. And summonses have been issued because the court's been closed. All the summonses are, you know, being held until we can get in front of a judge. With the zoning officer has issued multiple summonses to that piece of property. They're operating a use which doesn't have the variance for the use. The, the fence is falling down. You're right. It, it's, it's a crying shame. And Henry Vicaro brought this to my attention over a year ago. And I've been on top of it and we're, 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 I'm, I'm being told and Donna can correct me when I'm done that summonses have been issued. We're waiting for the courts to open up so we can find them guilty and they can pay their fees. I don't know why, we just can't shut them down. I'm not a lawyer and it's probably illegal. As far as like why we cannot renegotiate, we can renegotiate, but we cannot renegotiate unilaterally. A legally signed agreement between a previous council and a developer. I mean, and we have tried in the past. Amy's been, every council person's been there throughout the years where we've met with the master developer. And we've tried to renegotiate saying, hey, how about to, we'll give you this for that. We'll give you more height on First Avenue. You give us this. How about we give you this, we give you that? And nine out of 10 times, if not 10 out of 10, the answer's been no. So we do try to renegotiate, but we cannot just do it unilaterally. And again, if you guys say, hey, take it to court and you want us to bond $500,000 like the previous council and get their butts kicked by an arbitrator, which was the worst thing that ever happened because that lawsuit, taking them to court that they were in default, brought about the RAB agreement where all infrastructure was supposed to be paid for by the developer. But because Judge Politan, who then passed away, said, everybody should work together. And the council at that time thought that meant like, let the taxpayers pay for redevelopment, not the developers. So to me, that's not working together. But again, that's another signed agreement that we cannot unilaterally get out of. I understand you're frustrated. We're frustrated. If anybody out there is a better lawyer than our redevelopment lawyer, who Carrie would say is a good redevelopment lawyer, I think. Like, you know, and we look into everything. We look into Master Marquette. We look into all of our redevelopers. And if there's anything they're out of tune with, and again, this is the only council that found any redeveloper or in default, and we held them in default and they built the Fifth Avenue bandstand because we held them in default. So I understand your frustration and Donna, you can correct me on the other.
No, you're correct, ma'am.
As far as Asbury Avenue, summonses have been issued and we're waiting for the court to open up.
John, I learned one thing. Hit hard, you can always get soft.
Do what?
I said, hit hard, you can always get soft.
Okay. I don't want to hit hard like the past council and lose $750,000. And the taxpayers are now paying for the redevelopment of every street with the, which before that lawsuit was on the developer and now is on the taxpayer. Thank you, ma'am.
Hi, Catherine Healy, 305 Eighth Avenue. Again, also apologize for redundancy, but my brain's not firing all of its cylinders, as you can see. Why? So I just, I just want like a quick clarification. So I read the FEMA letters that were sent to the city and I read the city statement like many others in this room. And in the city, the city statement left me with a lot of questions. But my main question was in the last paragraph, you referenced holding ISTAR to the most restrictive requirements. And Mayor Moore, I think you brought this up, but I just want to make sure what exactly are the most restrictive requirements? Does that include FEMA standards? I know Alexis Taylor brought up a resolution during the last pool club planning board meeting to promise that they adhere to FEMA standards. But I just want to make sure that's what the most restrictive requirements mean.
Absolutely. And Donna, correct me if I'm wrong, but if they don't meet FEMA requirements, they will not get an okay from the city and they're dead in the water because they can't construct. And the reason there's no plans there is again, because everything they submitted two and a half years ago was conceptual and most of it, including the front, the sides and the back, have been changed. Some to the better, some worse, in my opinion. But that's why, and so what they submitted then is totally different than what's they're going to submit now that they're, you know, close to like final. They haven't gotten the resolution yet. So it hasn't been approved until the resolution's read and voted on.
So it'll look, so their, their plans could come back then and look like elevated on pylons and have all breakaway walls then? So they could totally change from what they submitted?
No, and I don't know. Why don't you come up, Michelle, and just so from a planner perspective? But conceptually, the, the beach club was approved by the planning board. The actual construction of the, the beach club has not even been reviewed by any of our professionals. And that's what the standards have to meet. And that's what we're going to hold them to. If Michelle wants to add anything as the planner, I don't want to.
But those plans haven't been submitted.
Correct.
So we can't look at them until they submit them.
Right. And that's what the FEMA letter said. Upon review of these plans, we have to hold them to the, which we will. But there's no plans for us to look at yet. So that's where, that's maybe the misconfusion.
Correct. I was going to, Michelle Alonso, Director of Planning and Redevelopment for the city of Asbury Park. I mean, John is using the term conceptual. The, the planning board reviews plans at a certain level. The designated floodplain manager for the city is the one who will review for FEMA compliance and is skilled for that review. Those details in the FEMA letter will be reviewed by the floodplain manager upon submission, and that is before construction permits are pulled. Those details are typically developed at the construction level. This project, as the mayor had stated, had, the design was in flux for two years as it was being presented to the planning board. And that is why it will happen, it happens post approval because there's no sense in there being a construction review before the, the basic design is voted upon or even approved at all.
Can I repeat this back? Because I'm not on the planning board, so I'm, I am not at all versed in planning other than being on the council. So you approve the conceptual design at the planning board level and then the details are, I'm using just vague terms. The details are what go to the construction department for approval.
Yes, these types of details are construction specific because when a project's at the planning board level. board level, these types of very specific details are not flushed out and developed. As was stated.
Because the conceptual design is not approved?
Right. And it was in flux. Right, it was in flux. So if the floodplain, the next step, well, resolution is adopted by the planning board. The next step will be for the floodplain app. They had then will need time to develop the construction documents and then the floodplain manager will review it. There will not be a construction permit pulled without a floodplain review by the designated floodplain manager by law. That is the law. The reviewing agent by law is the floodplain manager.
Okay. Thanks, Michelle.
Nice. You might want to stay there.
I will pop, I'll sit right there.
Pam Lamberton, 321 Sunset Avenue. I want to know who the floodplain manager is and who they report to. He was, it's Anton, what's his first name, Jay?
The floodplain reviewer will be a, a CFM from T and M Associates, the city engineer.
I'm sorry. Yeah, you gotta go to the mic, Jason.
Time out, time out, time out. Pam, ask while your question.
Yeah. It's T and M and I don't have his name in front of me.
Time out. Jay, come up, introduce yourself, say who you are and answer the question, please.
Captain, mayor, council, members of the public. My name is Jason Harzold. I represent the firm of T and M Associates, the appoint. My name is Jason Harzold. I represent T and M Associates, the Asbury Park City Engineers Office. Our office has multiple certified floodplain managers on staff and our office will be responsible for the review and comment and/or approval of the floodplain review for the beach club
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
Steve Davis, 1501 Ocean Avenue. On that same point, just what I hope is a quick question. I assume the floodplain review could involve many different things with respect to the base and what we can't see. Can I assume that it, it does not mean that in order to get the project constructed, the height with those types of design things can be altered without further approval from the planning?
Yeah, go ahead.
The height of the building itself is dictated by CAFR. So the building itself cannot go any higher than as approved by the planning board.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for your patience. My name is Don Eman. I live at 1501 Ocean Avenue. And my question is, according to the project schedule or timeline, when does the city expect to receive the construction documents that will be reviewed? Thank you.
Thank you. And we, we can't answer that question. That's up to I-STAR when they submit it. I'll tell you what, when they submit them, I'll, I'll, I'll post it on my Facebook page. Thank you.
Hi, Jeff Porter, 1104 Sunset Ave. I'm not here to talk about the pool club. I'm here to, I'm here to inform the city tonight about a public safety issue that I'm sure nobody is aware of. Surfing has gained popularity in the most recent years and especially throughout this pandemic. There's more surfers in the water each weekend. Nowadays, Asbury Park seems to have branded itself as a surf city and Surf Asbury. And we see photos of surfers on the boardwalk. And we just brought a Hurley store from Blue Star Lions Inc. into town, which has nothing to do with surfing. However, the city is not so kind to its surfers. First off, requiring beach badges to surf is unlike most towns in New Jersey where surfers get on for free, but that's not the real issue. The second issue is the safety. We're forced first to buy the badge, but to share a beach with a surf school who also pays a substantial fee to the city and many times is cramming upwards of 40 kids into already dangerous surf area. There's 16-year-old employees for the camp whose first priority is catching waves, but followed by that might be the safety of the children they're there to protect. And well, there's no regard for public safety. The weekend of the fifth, I was struck by four surfboards twice while I was riding one wave. And three of the parties were under the supervision of summertime surf. So the, the other was just a beginner trying to enjoy his weekend like myself. The average surfboard is eight foot with a leash that's six to seven foot. That's like a 15-foot striking radius per person. And I just bring this up to your attention, but because I have a solution, we're forced to buy beach badges, but swimmers are too, and swimmers have designated area between the ropes. The areas between the jetties and the ropes are open and we could surf there, allowing overflow of surfers. It's just not fair that the city's double dipping, charging this summertime surf camp school and surfers and cramming us all into one beach. It's really, really dangerous. I'm, I'm a certified open water lifeguard. I just keep it like up to date for my own personal safety and knowing, but it's like, it's really crazy out there. That's all.
Thank you and I appreciate that. Bringing it to our attention. And I'm not sure with the concession with the surf school, if there's a limited number or not, but let us look into that and see what we can do. But I know we've been requested, can we take like, say, Third Avenue Beach and make it no swimming, just surfing? And that's not going to happen. So I know you didn't ask for that, but I mean, other people have requested the same thing. I think you're right because of COVID, more people were bored. So you got a bunch of rookies or novices out there learning to surf and probably causing you to get hit twice. So thank you for bringing it to our attention and we'll look into it.
Can I ask, does Bradley or Ocean, does anyone else have a surf beach besides Asbury?
Yeah, everybody.
Oh, Bradley Beach, Ocean Grove, everybody has a section of their beach as surfing? Similar to ours in, in some capacity?
Bradley has at least three. Ours.
Okay.
Avon's got one.
Okay. I just didn't, I didn't realize.
I, I didn't realize that either. I knew long branch did, but I wasn't sure everybody else did. So thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Kathy Davis, 1501 Ocean Avenue. A public safety issue also. There are several skateboarders in front of the circle on Seventh Avenue. And in the beginning, when there were one or two, it wasn't a big deal. Some days there are up to eight skateboarders. The traffic is huge on the weekends especially. And I just, it's an accident waiting to happen. They come on the sidewalk. I know the police have been called. They say there's really nothing they can do. And that isn't till somebody gets run over or they hit a car. They go up in the air on the sidewalk while cars are going by. And I understand it's public property, but I just think something has to be done because it's, it's something is going to happen. The busier it gets, the, the more likely that's going to happen. Thank you.
No, thank you for bringing it to our attention. And Donna, is there nothing we can do? I mean, should, should people call the police?
They should. I'll, I'll talk to you, she'll call so bad.
Okay. But until you hear different, I would say continue to call the police. Well, well, annex part of Neptune. Next.
Hi, my name is Marion Karani and I live at 1501 Ocean Avenue. And I'm here to comment on the pool club. At one meeting, there was quite a lengthy discussion about water and the effect of water and sewage. So I know the planning board had a discussion, at least at that meeting, in regards to water. And the other thing that's really bothering me, really bothering me is the fact that I do not feel, I do not feel safe that this is going to be clearly taken care of and that we will not get stuck having no more FEMA insurance because that's the death ticket for Asbury Park. And so far, it seems everything is hush, hush. We don't know when they're going to redo the plans. There's no, I mean, how could you not know when they're going to do the plans? How could you not say, we want the plans by this date? FEMA's breathing down our neck. They have your plans in hand of your conceptual plans and they're threatening us. They're telling us that we're going to lose our insurance. Now, I don't really know the whole ins and outs of what happened with the master plan. Somewhere along the line, I need to research that because I have questions about that now too. But I really think we need to take them pretty seriously here. And I think more needs to be done to make sure they do what they're supposed to do. And they can keep the July 4th fireworks. We don't need them to put up our fireworks. And maybe we should stop taking from I-STAR and start telling I-STAR to do what they're supposed to be doing and not try to sneak through a, a piece of construction that could cause devastation to this town. That's all I have to say.
Well, I don't care what you want. You're, you're going to get one.
I don't have to hear it. I'm not leaving. As I see the action, what we have to say, all due respect.
No problem. God bless you. And you can watch it on AP TV. You've heard, everybody's heard tonight that I fell in the sword, maybe rightfully so, maybe wrongfully so, and I'm taking full responsibility. And I said it would never happen again. Everybody's heard the city manager, everybody's heard the entire council, everybody's heard our professionals saying it will not be built unless it meets FEMA 100%. So I give you my word, I'll bet you my house against a donut, it will not be built unless it meets FEMA's standards. And again, if somebody thinks I'm a liar, you can ask a lot of people about John Moore and John Moore can be a pain in the ass. John Moore can be mean, arrogant, whatever, but he is not a liar. So I, I take it like kind of wrong, like we're sitting up here saying, I screwed up and I'll take it. I'm the mayor. I screwed up and I'll take the bailing. Be it right or wrong, and I'm man enough, I'll take the blame. And I also said it will never happen again. So again, we, I have no problem talking about this all night long. Everybody can talk their three minutes about it. You can come back the next meeting, we can talk about it again. But I don't know how many times we can say, we told you, soon as they apply, we'll let you know. We told you as soon as like the decision's made, we'll let you know. We told you, we responded to FEMA and FEMA had no problem with our response or else they would have done either A or B and they haven't. So as far as this boogeyman scenario that we're all going to lose FEMA, it's not true. So ma'am, I apologize that you left and you didn't hear that. And I wasn't attacking you. I was just trying to make a statement. So thank you. Next.
Hi, Russ Fisher, 1501 Ocean Avenue. I live facing Sixth Avenue and a lot of cars coming down Kingsley are turning down Sixth Avenue the wrong way. I just want to know if you can put up a do not enter on the side where the parking meter is? And also on the block, there's an old sign that says wrong way. I don't know what it is. It's all washed out. You could barely see it because someone is gonna, and, and they shoot down. It's not like they go slow. It's just like they just zoom down. Someone's going to turn out or come out the garage or cross the street and not look to the right because they don't, they think they don't have to. But it's sort of like an accident waiting to happen.
Well, again, appreciate the heads up. And Michael, can we get that done?
We actually already got it. You have a neighbor, Sarah, who's already complained about it. I sent it to you about the circle. Yep.
Okay. Well, wait a second. Michael, can we get that done?
Yes, tomorrow, this week.
It'll be done tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you. And if it's not, if it's, if it's not done tomorrow, it's because we don't have this sign in stock and we may have to order it. So, okay, well, I hate to promise something.
Yeah, we'll do our best to get it up tomorrow.
Hi, my name's Barbara Cutler, 1501 Ocean. I just want to, at the risk of repeating, repetitive, reiterate the concerns of myself, my fellow 1501 folks and other residents of Asbury. My thought is that due to the apparent lack of transparency, perhaps when I-STAR does eventually produce those plans, which I agree should be an ASAP project, given FEMA's communication, perhaps the planning board should be brought back in along with those entities that are going to review the construction specifics and nuances. The optics of the situation are horrific. And the fact that the planning board approved it, I think it was five to two on June 7th, and then low and behold, within what, 48, 72 hours, all of this turmoil erupts. The optics, I, I did a fair amount of public relations in my professional life, the optics are horrific. And I really feel that whether or not the powers that be feel it's essential, the court planning board should be brought back in concurrent with the other entities that are going to review these final plans.
Good evening. My name is Steven Levinson, 1501 Ocean Avenue. As, as I listen to everything that's being said here, I'm finding myself in some respects more confused than when I walked in here. I've been to all the meetings. I followed everything online. I've been to all the meetings that have been done virtually. I listened to what's being said and what I'm finding out is that there's too much that's being addressed here in a, in a more personal matter and less objective. John, I, I don't think that you should be the person that, that would be held responsible because the information didn't get through the planning board. But I think the planning board needed to know this in order to make a decision. How could they possibly make a, a decision to approve something or not without having that piece of information? I, I want to thank you. I want to thank all the people who are, who are working on the, on the planning board and on the city council for the work that you do. I listened to this, to the planning board take a vote where two people voted against this project going forward in its current form and the other people all having comments about things that they, that they were concerned about, but approved it anyhow. So how can it be that you have concerns about a project and still approve it? Now, as far as what you have to say about the letters that have come through and who has said what, the fact that you haven't heard back from FEMA saying that they had, that they don't have a problem, doesn't mean they don't have a problem. I've dealt enough with, with state and federal authorities in all kinds of situations to find out, it's not just what they say, it's what they don't say. So until you've heard from them that there's no problem with what it is that's been responded to by the city council or whoever responded, you don't know that they don't have a problem with it. As far as I'm concerned, the validity of this approval is in question because they didn't have the information available to them to make the correct decision. So why not take it back to the planning board and say, you know what? We didn't have all the information that we needed. You need to take a look at this and then make a decision as to whether or not the information that you had is, is enough to be able to make the same decision that you did before. Until that time, I don't understand why this would be considered a legal decision because they didn't have all the information.
Thank you, sir.
Move to close?
Seeing nobody else, make a motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is now closed to the public. We are on two minutes. I have the municipal council executive meeting minutes of June 9th, the 4:00 PM. The municipal council regular meeting minutes of June 9th, 6:00 PM. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Vote call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We are on to consent agenda. All consented, all matters listed on the consent agenda are presented collectively to the city council and will be considered for approval with one vote. These matters are to be considered routine in nature. There will be no individual discussion of these items. If discussion is desired by one or more council members as to any particular item, then said item shall be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. My understanding is the council wishes to have 21-310, the resolution approving the the resolution approving the special events application, removed from the consent agenda and voted on separately?
Yes, please.
Okay. So the resolutions that are considered under the consent agenda are 2021-311 to 2021-321. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall? Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Now, we are on to individual resolutions. The first individual resolution will be Resolution 2021-310, a resolution approving special events applications. And my understanding is we are looking to have the Bond Street removed and the Santa Run removed.
Correct. Voted on separately, Melody.
Okay, we're going to vote on those separately?
Yep.
All right. We'll do 310 without Bond Street and Santa.
So that would be the Ray Sterneski art show and the Cross and Orange wedding reception?
Yes.
So.
Do I have a motion?
Wait, wait a second. What, what does it include?
We're voting for two. The Ray Sterneski art show and the Cross and Orange wedding reception.
And Krampus.
And Krampus. But that's not on this. Yeah, so that's not on this.
It's not on the?
It's, the application's in there, but it's not on the cover sheet.
Okay.
So we're voting on three.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
And now we will vote individually on the Santa Run and the Bond Street. As one combined?
First, do Santa Run.
Yeah, you should probably do them separately.
Okay, let's do the Santa Run. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
I'll second.
Questions or comments before roll call? Nope. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
No.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
No.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We will now move on to the.
That was defeated.
It was defeated. Okay.
We'll now move on to the Bond Street.
But it could come back. Not tonight.
Not tonight.
Correct.
Do I have a motion?
Leach, I'm happy to call you tomorrow and go over my concerns with the Santa Run if you have to get back to the applicant. But it's just, it's what it brings here.
We'll just notify him and then we'll see what he wants to do.
What's the date of Santa? What's the date?
December.
That's what I mean. We're not talking about like life or death.
Yeah. Okay, Bond Street block party. Move it.
Do I have a second on the Bond Street?
Second.
Questions or comments before roll call? None? Council? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
No.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
On to individual resolutions. The first individual resolution we have is 2021-322, a resolution approving the payment of bills. Do I have a motion?
Did we do enough? 321?
320. Yeah, that, that was part of the consent.
Move it then. On bills.
Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
No.
Resolution 2021-323, a resolution authorizing payment to Monmouth County Department of Community Development and Planning for Services Rendered for the City's Community Development Block Grant Program.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Go on.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Do you want me to continue?
Continue.
Resolution 2021-324, a resolution authorizing execution of a shared service agreement with Passaic Valley Sewerage Commission for Sludge Disposal. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn is not in the room. Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2021-325, a resolution of the City of Asbury Park, the County of Monmouth, the State of New Jersey, providing for insertion of special items of revenue in the 2021 budget of the City of Asbury Park pursuant to NJSA 40A:4-87, Chapter 159, Clean Communities Grant. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn is not in the room. Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2021-326, the resolution of support authorizing a New Jersey Department of Transportation Bike Ways grant application and execute a grant contract. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2021-327, a resolution of support authorizing a New Jersey Department of Transportation Safe Streets to Transit Grant Application and Execute a Grant Contract.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2021-328, a resolution of support authorizing a New Jersey Department of Transportation Municipal Aid Grant Application and Execute a Grant Contract.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2021-329, a resolution authorizing T&amp;M Associates to prepare an NJDOT grant application.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Question.
Back it up.
For what street is that?
Eighth Avenue.
What?
Eighth Avenue.
Eighth Avenue, Rita.
I lied.
Yay. Thank you.
You're welcome. I had a guess from Councilmember Chapman, Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2021-330, a resolution of support authorizing the Sustainable New Jersey Municipal Water Storey Technical Assistance Application.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2021-331, a resolution confirming the term associated with the approvals previously granted for the food truck court at the beachfront.
And, and Melody, just for a comment, I think we updated this resolution to change the time to 8:00 a.m.?
It is. The operation time now reflects 8:00 a.m.
Until what time? Till 9:00 p.m. Perfect. Great. Move it.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
So the only thing, and, and I obviously don't see anyone from Madison here. So this is falling on deaf ears, but I'm going to say it anyway that I hope Madison Marquette is looking at local vendors for the food truck park, that they are not, you know, I, I would like them to prioritize local vendors, specifically Row Beans or, you know, people who've been in town for a long time, who've given a lot to this town, as opposed to all outside vendors. If there's all outside vendors at this food truck, I just want to go on record that I will rethink this if they ask for it again.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2021-332, a resolution authorizing a contract to Siemens for bus transportation services for the 2021 summer camp services.
Is, okay. Is this an add-on I don't have?
Yes, yes. It's, it's in front of you.
Yeah. Leash has been working day and night trying to secure buses.
Plenty of stuff's in front of her.
Summer recreation program. And she finally was able to solicit votes and get a, a bus to actually provide us some transportation for the children for the summer. That's why it's on so late.
Good job, Leash.
And thank you, Leash, for all your hard work to get this accomplished. Thank you.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We are now on to ordinances. Ordinances for introduction. The first ordinance is Ordinance 21-27, an ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 5 Beach Boardwalk and Beachfront Regulations of the Code of the City of Asbury Park with a public hearing of July 14th.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
The second ordinance for introduction, 21-28, an ordinance of the City of Asbury Park amending Chapter 7 of the Code of the City of Asbury Park regarding traffic regulations pertaining to what constitutes an abandoned vehicle with a public hearing date of July 28th.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We are now on to second readings, public hearings. The first ordinance up for a public hearing is Ordinance 2021-23, an ordinance amending Section 7-27 entitled Loading Zones of Chapter 7 Traffic of the Code of the City of Asbury Park to establish new loading zones along Main Street, State Route 71. Do, we have a brief?
Michael, go ahead.
Okay.
Members of the public, this ordinance is to establish loading zones on Main Street. Two loading zones. The first is one that has de facto existed without an ordinance on the books. And that's from Lake Avenue North on Main Street, on the east side of Main Street. And we're looking to add another one on the, from Sewol Ave, south, on the west side of Main Street.
Do I have a motion to open the public hearing on Ordinance 21-23?
Move to open.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Members of the public who wish to be heard on Ordinance 21-23, please come to the mic, state your name and address for the record.
Rita Moreno, 504 Eighth Avenue, Asbury Park. I, I don't know if this relates to it, but I happen to notice today, riding down Main Street, that Corbo's yellow, uh, yellow curb is always down the Brando's.[1493.05]